Good evening everyone and a very warm welcome to all of you. Students. First, there is a message. Yesterday, we have sent a post notification for today's president's address at seven thirty P M. Please let us know whether you have received or not. Please confirm by unmute or please write in chat box.
Yes, receive the message.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Now, I am in starting session. Thank you students for taking the time to join us today. As many of you know, the I B S paper stands apart from traditional academic subject. It is not a typical exam which is depend on formulas or road theory. It is different instead it mirrors real business challenges, okay? Inspiring you to to think holistically strategically and practically. It is about learning to solve complex problems like C E O, C F O, statutory editors, initial management, corporate strategy, laws, taxation, operations and compliance framework. In previous sessions, we looked at real life examples, okay? From industries such as airlines where we discussed how companies manage their cost and plan flight routes efficiently. F M C G companies which need strong brand presence and smooth supply chain operations. The T sector where we explored how T moves from farm to factories and finally to customers and showing challenges in agriculture supply chain. And we also discussed about transport company where we saw how app based services are changing the way of traditional transport business work. We studied how various tools like balance scorecard are applied by companies and how strategic decisions are closely tied to strategic decisions closely tied to N D S, Pema regulations, tax laws, corporate governance framework, okay? Today, we bring you an interesting case study from the world of fast fashion. This global company operates in over hundred countries with a network of more than two thousand retail stores at global level. Mostly located in high traffic area like Singapore, Hong Kong, New York, Tokyo. What sets this company apart is not just its fashion, it is its business model. It is very different company, its business model is very, very different. The brand has redefined the fashion, fashion and its supply chain. While traditional fashion retailers plan collections months in advance. This company follows a check to rec cycle to just two to four weeks. This means if a trend emerges on a runway or on social media, new designs inspired by that trend could be available in the store within days. Okay, this level of agility is made possible only through a vertical integrated supply chain, centralized production hubs, a tight inventory model, almost no advertising spend, okay? Despite its minimal marketing spend, the brand has achieved vast customer loyalty and consistent rank among the most valuable retail brand globally. The owner who started with a small workshop many years ago, built such a smart and efficient retail business that he eventually become one of the richest people in the world. The company's strategy is a textbook example of how innovation in operation and clarity in positioning can disrupt a traditional industry, okay? From I B S perspective, this case offers a unique opportunity to think like a business strategies, C E O and C F O. It touches upon application of N D S nineteen, N D S one zero two, Pema regulations, N D S sixteen as well as product strategy, okay? This is kind of integrated thinking which this paper requires. It is not just about finding answer from your textbook, but it is based on strategic financial regulatory and ethical considerations. All the case study materials are available on the students portal. I urge you to go through the same. Today's session will be interactive, so please free, please feel free to ask any question whether in English or Hindi, you can speak by unmuting yourself. Also, the last fifteen minutes will be reserved for you for your general queries. We are truly honored to have us for today's session C S Sumit Dada, a distinguished chartered accountant with more than twenty years of experience in field of statutory audits. Indian accounting standards, valuation, risk assessment and providing board level insight as an independent director. His insights will help you to bridge the gap between theoretical and practical knowledge. So that, let us begin today's session and the and a deep dive into this business case, sir, over to you.
Thank you Deepak sir for the warm introduction and setting the tone of the day. Good evening fellow fellow participants, students. This topic today, just let me start the slides. Now, since sir has rightly explained, I B S is just not to read and get an answers. So for a passing, one can always look into it, but I am sure you all will agree, life is more than passing. Just by passing, we do not become the best, we become the best when, just a second. Now, feel free to ask any questions in between by unmuting yourselves or asking anything in between. If I know, I will be happy to answer if I do not know, then I will seek help of Deepak sir because everyone has limited knowledge. So, coming back to the point. Who do you think industry would like to keep? Only a chartered accountant who knows debit credit or is he knows audit or tax? Or someone who is a troubleshooter or a problem solver and he is more than beyond the numbers. He can go, he can think beyond the numbers, two plus two four anybody can do, but how to get the two? Two from two to four, four to eight, how can you give, can you deep dive on the business? I have seen, we all start with audit tax, but later on when we grow up in our life, when you grow up in our positions, industry expects you think more beyond the C E. Just don't restrict to ourselves to audit, it is very easy to understand strategies. Now, today is on fashion industry. Fashion industry, I am sure we all know because we all wear clothes daily. So we have little bit inclination towards fashion industry, we know, at least we are end consumer. End consumer, making planes, so selling helicopters of fashion industry of customers. And think like a businessman, think like you want to start a textile industry tomorrow. Or start selling dress materials, apparel, what all you could do to start your business? Assuming I assuming you a venture capital firm gives you hundred crore rupees to start with. What do you think could be your starting point? Think like a businessman and then we will understand few points ahead of this. You can speak or write whatever makes comfortable to you. Now you are becoming an entrepreneur, so you need to think. And thinking is the most toughest part. Execution will only happen when we think, right? Whatever we do, we do two times, first in our mind and then we do execution. So if innovative product design, finding your target market, find someone need to do product design innovative, okay? Finding your target market, okay, fine. Sriti, would you like to add something on this? If you want to start your business of textiles or apparel, t shirts, anything for male, female kids or anyone else? Now, now. So, so how, how easy is you think to start a business when there is already lot of players existing in the market? What do you think? How easy is your business to start when there are already players in the market? Challenges or very easy cakewalk? It will never be a cakewalk, there will be always challenges, always there will be challenges. Whatever you do in life, there will be always challenges, nothing will come easy to you. C E course is not easy, right? Everything is a challenge. Now, they will be always, there will be always players in the market. So just to give an example, iPhone, I am sure we all know, one of the best smartphones. When iPhone was getting launched, when iPhone was getting launched and Steve Jobs went to the board of directors to ask permission. Can I move to, can I make iPhone now? Now, because they have already made iPods, Mac Windows, Mac Apple was successful. So when, when Steve went to the board of directors to ask, I want to make iPhone, what do you think? The board would have said, yes, Steve, go ahead, but entire board rejected the proposal that no, they are late to enter into it. Let's not go into it. What do you think about competitors? But if you have faith in your product and you understand the market very well. If you understand the sentiments of your customers, then you can make a niche product which people will die to buy for. And I am sure you know what happened after next. People used to stand on queues for a day to get the first product of iPhone. And what the biggest change he did, if anybody would be aware, the biggest change he did. When we used to buy phone earlier, when we used to buy phone earlier. Do you remember they used to have a thick booklet on how to operate the phone? Have you ever seen earlier times a booklet used to how to operate a phone, it used to be thick booklet? It will tell how to open a SIM card, how to open a insert a SIM at all. Steve Jobs said, my phone would be so smart that it will base on intuition. People will just open and understand, you don't need to get it. And that's why how he made this phone, left, right and things go ahead. So similarly that, now market is full, clothes brands are always full. Then if I want to come in, what should I look for? So I should always look for, what are the challenges faced by existing customers and existing businessmen? These two data, these two inputs, these two knowledge will tell you where to move on, where not to move on. Because what is smartness, learn from other mistakes is the smartest thing one can do. So if somebody is already in, in, somebody is already in textile industry and they have burned their fingers in something, they would have done something wrong, they have tasted the market. You can learn from their mistakes and can start your business. Now, just think upon what could be the challenges of this industry from the entrepreneur side? Think what could be the challenges from a business side? Let's not think from entrepreneur side, don't get personal into entrepreneur side, just from a business. What is the problem of this business? What problem you can think if you become an entrepreneur, you start this textile business tomorrow? What problems you could foresee generally? What do you think, what problems you can foresee that may occur if you start this business? Which is generally the nature of this business? Any quick thoughts you have? Trend, so you are saying trend or I thought it trend, trend is a Tata's company, so you are seeing trend, okay? Trend is one of the, one of the biggest challenge, you rightly said Sunil, trend is the biggest challenge. And what is the biggest challenge in this? The moment trend changes, the demand will go for a dip. You have already created lot of supply and the trend changes, what should I do with the remaining inventory? And what is this problem? What is the problem with me for inventory? My working capital cash flow bleeds, my cost of capital, you understand I am creating something extra. I created, let's say I created hundred thousand pieces of selling, selling any, any, let's say, any product, let's say bill bottoms, hundred thousand pieces. Suddenly the trend changes and for some reason people say no, it's not good, it's very old fashioned. And now entire product got waste, now can I reuse it again? Probably no, reusing is very difficult. Now my, my inventory gets stuck and then why, what will happen? I need to sell it a huge discount. Supply chain complexity, this is very difficult when you are outsourcing. When you have in-house, you can still manage this, but when I am outsourcing, it is always a challenge. And what is the challenge in outsourcing? The challenge in outsourcing is, am I serious to outsource product or I'll, I'll be very serious to my own brands? What do you think? I will be always more serious to my brand than outsourced work because then I said it's not belong to me, it's somebody else. So quality issue will always come there. So because of change in demand, now creating market is tough, okay? Now, fashion changes very fast. So they say fashion is yesterday's. Whatever you are wearing today may become outdated day after tomorrow and trend changes very fast. So you cannot predict now, how do you think you can sales, any sales team of, of clothing industry can predict? What colors we need to bring in, what shape design, how do you think they can bring in? How do you think they can bring this? If you are, you need to hire someone who designs your t shirts or the in this. How do you think he will design, he will decide, people will gonna wear what, which color they will prefer? How do you think, how do they sense that? So who creates a trend? Regular market research. So you need to know your customer very well. If your customer is, so I am sure you all will agree that white or blue color you will generally find professionals, C E is wearing this. You may not find Gen Z or Alpha or young crowd wearing white or blue generally because these are professional colors, generally they will avoid. So you cannot have one size fit all concept. You need to have different, different, you need to have different, different colors and for different crowds. No discount on them, Prashant, I do not understand why there is no discount on them, that means you are saying do not give any discount? If you don't give any discounts, then why should I enter in any shop? The first thing I will look is for discount generally, right? So if you say, okay, are you saying it's no, no negotiable, the price is fixed, that way you are saying? Not given on right now, absolutely, you don't get a discount because they know these are premium product taken by professionals, they have to take it anyways. Absolutely, that's who they work on. Now, now, one of the thing which you talked of is trend, the trend may change. Now, if you go and buy, if you generally go for buying. It have, does it ever happens that you go to buy and you see the dress and you try and fit it out? And then you say, okay, I'll come after next week or next week I'll come, I'll bring someone from my home and get it approved. Does you have a, your times that you just go there, try and come out? Just like a window shopping. You like the dress, but you are not sure to buy and not to buy, you want from someone, your family, your brother, sister, mother, father, anyone from your someone to commit. Many times it happens, many times problems, okay? Now, think from a, so this is also a challenge because my customer is coming and doing window shopping. Is it also a challenge or not generally? Now, tell me, will you come, will you do the same thing if I tell you this product is limited? It may not be there tomorrow and it is genuine statement, it's not that I am just trying to missell you that, okay, Smriti, no. The product is put on hold, but what if I tell you Smriti that ma'am, if you do not come back tomorrow, then I need to sell with someone who is coming? What will happen that? Taste, okay? So what happens? Why one of this, one of this Zara brand which sir was talking, what is their, their policy? In two weeks, they changed their entire inventory. They replace the inventory very fast. But when you replace the inventory very fast, what happens? What do you think happens when you, you, when, when everybody in the world knows, you will be replacing inventory very fast. It is so quick, yes, and why is that so? We will go through that strategy also, why is that so, why is that so? It is artificial scarcity. So if I like something, I go and I like some shirt and, and if I know that yes, in two weeks they turn around, then I will not take much time to make. We will come to that how it is possible. So this is one of the strategy that if you, if you want to sell faster, you need to tell them that if it is a limited product. Once it is limited, then it sells fast. If you know it is not a limited product, you know it is endless. And why they made limited, any idea why they make limited? Generally, let's say some, some design is selling much, will I make limited or I should make unlimited? Brand value, what if everybody of you start wearing the same fit, imagine, tell me honestly you all. Tomorrow if you saw everybody wearing same blue shirt from Zara or H and M or any other brand, same color shirt, everybody. Would you like to still wear that or you will say, I will take something else? It is still the same brand, it is the most preferred brand, but why you not like it? Because then everyone has a psychological that I like, I would, should be look different. Then it will be common, though it is the best brand which we are looking for, taste difference, absolutely right. So that's why they make limited and why they make limited so that not everyone wears it? Because it, because see, if the product is reasonable, if the product is not very pricey, it's reasonable, then everybody starts buying. But not, but the, any company would not like to dilute their brand, which people say, no, no, I would not like to buy this brand because everybody is having this brand. And that is the reason they need to have product differentiation and that happens only when you to make a limited period. So what they will do is, okay, from India, they will remove those products which have been come in last two weeks, ship it to nearby country. So India they will put to, let's say Bangladesh or they put to China, Nepal, that way nearby they start putting in. So two, two weeks later they start moving their inventory. So this is one of the, one of the parameters they have. Now, uh, any idea? Uh, which are the few, few most emerging brands in India on textiles, if you can think of? If you think of few brands. Which you generally see or, or mall or shopping stores in India which are brands. Probably last two years would have seen them, then huge shops opening, huge counters opening. Any, any numbers? Indian brands you can think of two, three, which you see. Okay, what about stores? What about stores, which stores you can think of? And solely Louis Vuitton are old. Any few stores you think last two, three years, you would have heard a lot of these stores. So Westside is one. Along with Westside, which other store you can think of? Peter England is very old. Name suggests England, but it is Bangalore, it is in, now, uh, Chennai, Tirupur, okay? This is near in south in Tirupur where the entire Peter England is manufactured. So Zoodio you have seen Zoodio, has it opened nearby or visited somewhere, so Zoodio you would have seen. And Westside you have seen, okay? Do we know that Zoodio and Westside both are under one organization? Zoodio and Westside both are of one organization only, do we know that? So wherever, so now you will see the Westside is a different and Zoodio is a different. Now, any idea why any organization will have Westside different and Zoodio different in the same textile industry, any vague thoughts? And it's not something hidden information, it's publicly information, everybody would be knowing in the industry that, okay, Westside also belongs to Tata Group and Zoodio also belongs to Tata Group. Now, any idea why a group, let's say Tata Group or any other group will have two competitors under one? Different pricing clothes, so you need to understand, there are a different market segment. So like in India, there are people who will be willing to buy iPhone and there are people who will be willing to buy Oppo. Both have different market segments, all are right in their own purchasing parity. Whatever my pocket allow, what do you think Smriti, which one is the higher pricing clothes, Zoodio or Westside? What do you think? Between Zoodio and Westside, which one is a higher pricing band? Zoodio is reasonable, so Westside is expensive, absolutely. So Zoodio has catered to a reach of, of college going or semi urban where people can buy now. Now, any idea? Zara is in India. Zara works, Zara is working with partnership from whom, any vague idea? Any vague idea? So Zara we know, right, Zara is in India, right, that we know, Zara is in India. Though it is in a small level, it is in India, it is a Spanish brand, start from Spain. It is in India, Zara. Any idea who is running Zara brand in India, any vague idea? By now, I am sure you should have guessed it by now. By now you should have guessed it. No, no, not by relax. Tata, absolutely right, Prasham. Now, the same Tata Group who is holding, who is holding Westside and Zoodio are also holding Zara. Now, let me give you one data set for you to just give some views on that, just give a minute. Okay, just give a minute. So this is a annual report of trend. Trend is a company who owns, who owns Westside and Zoodio and also to some extent runs Zara. Now, how many, how many cities, so this is twenty twenty four report like last year's, twenty five numbers noted out. Based on last years, how many cities Westside is into, Westside is into? Nine hundred, just maybe my pointer works out, just, pointer does not work out, okay, leave it. Zoodio, Westside is running in ninety one cities and two thirty two, nine two thirty two. Stores in India. Any idea how many cities Zoodio would be and how many stores there would be approximately? Just take a score. Just take a score. And there are no negative answers in class, right? So just a guess, we are thinking what we can think based on our imaginations. So I have just given you context of Westside which is higher brand, higher expensive. So I've just given you context of Westside, which is higher brand, higher expensive clothes. So they are in ninety one cities with two thirty two stores. Any vague idea how much would be Zoodio? Any numbers? Smriti, give me, don't give me politically correct answers. You give me quantifiable answers. And again, I said there is nothing right. So you are saying, uh, Prashant, you are saying one twenty cities, okay? And stores would be approximately or you are saying one twenty stores? Five hundred. You're nearby, Sunil, you are very near. Okay, so if you see it, so if you see the cities now, how much cities they have? Hundred and sixty four cities and five forty five. So now you see the difference? Because I am into a tier two, tier three cities, that's why I'm growing much faster. And on a, on a lighter note, you know, we used to say in jokes now in, in Jaipur, so I'm from Jaipur, we got seven, eight Zoodios. So people used to say now, how do you give a landmark now? Now we'll say, okay, Zoodio wale ke pichhe jo ghare hai, uske aage jo Zoodio hai, vahana jana. But they were saying in a, in a sarcastic way that now we got so many Zoodios. Earlier, it was only one Zoodio in Jaipur. But then with the brand opening, with the way it is picking up, that sales is picking up, multiple Zoodios are over. So now ninety one cities, two thirty two stores, one sixty four cities, Zoodio and five forty five. Now comes an interesting question. Uh, so just to give a figure, just to give a figure. Total sales of trend, of apparel was eleven thousand nine hundred crores. Eleven thousand nine hundred crores was the sales. Now, any idea how many Zara stores are in the city? How many cities Zara is in and total number of stores? Any vague number? This would be difficult. So Westside was foundation, Zoodio was inter. Answering Zara is a final question. Little bit difficult. Fifty cities, okay? And then how much, how much would be stores approximately? Okay, just give me a number. Now you see? See the number? The story does not end here. Now, and twelve would be top cities in India where, where the purchasing parity is, power is much higher, where people will not think twice before spending, right? And when we said, when we talk to spending, just sort of context, I put one knowledge for you. You know, the, uh, the Nobel Prize was given to someone in finance function, you know, in finance field. The first Nobel Prize was given to a gentleman and what was the subject of his thesis? The subject of his thesis was, the subject of his thesis was that, uh, the subject of his thesis was you get, you get, uh, you get, just give me a minute. The subject of the thesis was, if you pay by credit card, if you pay by credit card, you will feel less pain in spending. Whereas if you pay the same amount by cash, you will feel more pain. How simple it is and he got a Nobel Prize for this. He did a lot of behavioral science on that. Now, was I limited access to write? Uh, uh, Smriti, I could not understand the question. When you say must be having limited access to write, what does that mean? Limited access to write, what does that mean in, in, uh? When we say limited access to, if you can unmute also, I can speak, I'll be happy to listen to you also if you like to speak or type, whichever is comfortable to you. When you are. What do you understand by this question? He, they must be having limited access to write. I'm not able to grasp the question.
Yes, hello sir. Uh, the thing is, I had to ask, the stores of Zara are limited in count, right? I mean, uh,
They're only, they're only in twelve cities and twenty three stores.
Acha, so, uh, the, what to say? Uh, it, it's a luxurious brand and at the same time it has got, uh, limited, uh, stores all over India.
Correct. And, and limited, limited, and you know why it is limited? Because of, because as I mentioned, uh, customers in, customers in, in Bangalore, Mumbai, Delhi, Hyderabad are considered to be matured customers when in terms of paying parity, purchasing power.
Okay, purchasing power parity.
So they will be spending more, wherever is if you put somewhere in Jaipur, Jodhpur, Ajmer, two major cities of Rajasthan, people will think twice. You know, so I have.
There will be a hesitation in mind, huh? But then it's a grand welcome in Jaipur also, as I came to know from you that, uh, Zoodio ke liye, uh, for Zoodio. But, uh, Zara, your point is right, huh? Yes.
Because what, what, what happens generally, uh, do, do, do you know, have you ever heard people go to top expensive stores of, let's say, uh, Biba or let's say Satyapal, click the pictures and then go to their tailor, when master G says, sir, please get me something like this.
Yes, they gave a reference point maybe, huh?
Take it a reference point, right? Because if my budget cannot afford Zara, right? So I will go through there. The problem is, if people start doing this to Zara, their design gets public, everybody starts wearing that, so it becomes a challenge, right? So that's why they put in limited area, that's why they put in limited area. Now I'll ask a very difficult question to you all. So you've got the data, you got the.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for, uh, speaking, Smriti. Now you got a, you, you all got a data that, uh, uh, Zoodio is five forty five, uh, five forty five stores, it is two hundred stores. And Zara only twelve cities, twenty three stores in India, okay? The total sales, the total sales of trend grow, including all three, is eleven thousand nine hundred crores. That's a total sales. Any vague idea? How much will be the contribution of Zara in that? How much sales of Zara in twenty twenty four out of this eleven thousand nine hundred? Any vague number? If you consider the store numbers, what are the store numbers? If I take store numbers of, let's say, just for your, uh, understanding, two thirty two plus, Westside is two thirty two and if I take, uh, uh, five forty five, so two thirty two, five forty five, seven hundred seventy seven approximately, approximately seven hundred seventy. So seven seventy plus twenty three stores. Total sale is eleven thousand nine hundred crores. Any vague idea? How much sales you think Zara could have done out of this eleven thousand nine hundred? Any vague number? But with the number of stores, are you not optimistic, too much optimistic with the number of stores? So it is two thousand seven hundred seventy crores, approximately twenty five percent what you have mentioned. Now you see the difference? Let me also put the statement from here, just give a minute. Because annual reports always gives interesting data, just a second. Now see the annual report of, this is the annual report and they mentioned that how much sales they are making from this, just see that. Uh, make PC, just if, if it is visible, if you can read that para where they said during the year end review, Zara revenues two thousand seven sixty nine crores. Now isn't it incredible? Only twenty three stores and you are making a sale of two thousand seven hundred seventy crore approximately. Per store, how much you are making there? Imagine per store, how much you are making? More than a, more than a thousand crore. Uh, more, more than a hundred crores. Now you see? Because they have focus present only in high quality retail price, high quality retail price they are focused on. They open very less stores, twenty three stores across twelve cities and still their sales is twenty five percent. Whereas seventy five percent is contributed by a number of stores is seven hundred seventy. So if you think twenty three and seven seventy, it's not comparable at all. Now, you would have seen advertisement of Zoodio, Westside, have you seen advertisement of, of Zara? Probably no. Let me also show you the numbers also, just to give an idea, just a second. So, the financial statement is just to give an idea and, and always read, uh, financial statements of any industry you like. So you get an idea how the industry is moving. If you see the sales, see the sales figure. It is eleven thousand nine hundred crore approx because it's in crore. And our entire, out of this even twenty five percent you are giving to Zara, which is one brand, which is also not your own brand. You are working as in partnership. This brand you have taken a franchisee. So Tata's have taken a franchise of Zara brand, Zara do not sell the, uh, they, they work in collaboration. And so now we'll come back to one point, just give a minute, let me change it. So now, uh, what is the edge they have on fashion industry? Now the edges, as I mentioned, they don't, they don't advertise much. Very, very least advertising, advertisement is spent on commercials, very least. Because the, so Zara was formed in, opened in Spain in nineteen seventy five. And the, their promoter had a vision and the promoter said, instead of me talking about the product, me advertising the product, the product should speak itself, the product should speak itself. So when, when Bajaj, uh, Chetan was launched, they asked Rajiv Bajaj to sit on the scooter and click a photo to become an ad, an advertisement. And he said, I don't want to sell a product on my picture. If the product is good, it will sell automatically. And then Bajaj Chetan become the, become the, the middle class, one of the best who does people used to have. So the product should have quality. Now, in textile industry, how do you think you can, you can have a brand value? How do you think you can have a brand value? When we said brand value, loyalty, how does it comes? Any idea? How does it comes? Any vague idea? How does it comes? How do you create a brand or loyalty in industry where customer will always want, want the least? You know, we agree, every customer wants a luxury without paying much. Even if I am a customer, I have experience, customer experience, that's the most important thing to have a brand loyalty. Customer will not become your loyalty, just any film star is endorsing your product. Customer will get your loyalty once he uses it, he experiences it, right? Now, generally, and I'm talking from Indian mindset, generally in India, what was the mindset earlier? Do we like to buy, do we like to buy textile, buy on, online? Or we would like to go at the shop, try it and buy it out, generally? Always offline, because you never know when the, how does the color look like, how does the, uh, fitting look like? You are showing on green, you are showing green, but it is coming blue. So it was a different, that was change. Now, it, it is not easy to change the trend. So the trend was offline since ages. Because somewhere, do you, do we agree that customer gets satisfaction by touching, by feeling the clothes? How does the well-wear, how does the texture feel like? You just put the cloth by hand, you would have seen, that's you give back. Which could not be done in online, which could not be done in online. So to make online product faster, what they did was, what they did to make online product faster? How to add the scale? Okay, we will do a cash on delivery. We will do a free refund. You don't like it, within seven days you return it back. So they started with this. And if you see, if I show you the statistic, how much, how much in, in COVID, their sales got increased? So in, so generally in, if we talk in, um, if I talk in, just a second, let me, yeah. Uh, before COVID, they were selling twenty six billion US dollars online. Any vague idea after COVID how much they would have sold? Any vague idea? In COVID, twenty six billion dollar they were selling in twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty, any idea how much they would have sold in US only? From twenty six billion dollar to they would have went to where? Because in twenty twenty was shut down, locked down entire globe. Still, any weight number you can think of? It would have increased, decreased. You know, there was a, there was a view that in COVID, since nobody was going out, so there will be less, uh, sales. Remember that period, since people are not wearing presses, you are at a ho- home only, so why you need to wear different dresses? That was a concern, that mindset. But see the sales of Zara, let me show you the sales of Zara and you see the numbers how it increased. The, the sales in COVID was twenty six billion of Zara. In twenty twenty two, it reached to forty four million, forty four billion US dollar. And in twenty twenty one, it reached to fifty three billion dollar. Now that's the way in e-commerce, in we, in a period where people were not moving out, they were not willing to, they were, they were not required to change dresses and they got this. Now why does that happen? Because they started giving a feel-good factor that, okay, we will give you discount, we will give you using, you, you keep it used for seven days. If you don't like it, the product, give it back. And then the customer will get comforted, okay, I can return back whenever I don't like it. So this is the way industry works in, where you need to get people into your side by giving their, by giving them respective advantages. So, the vision of S E company when they were making was to have a competitive advantage. And you can maintain com- competitive advantage only by, only by having the superior quality control. Quality is very, very important in textile, very, very important. Because you are going to wear, you know, so that's what they say. Whatever you are wearing either on your body or in your shoes, quality has to be absolutely right. If you, if something is not right, it, you will feel uncomfortable. You get something in your shoes, it is biting, you will not be able to focus on your work. You wear something where the texture is not, the cloth is itching you, let's say you are not habitual of wearing polyester. And instead of getting cotton, something was coming cheap on online, you bought a product and then later on you wear it and you realize you made a mistake. Has it ever happened to you that because of something coming very cheap on e-commerce platform, you bought something and then when you wear it, you do not find it good? The quality was not up to the market, have ever it happened with anyone of us? But then you would not have seen it is polyos, it is polyester or it is terracotta or it is cotton, because that's always happen. So, so call it, and once you buy a bad product, partially you will not going to repeat that mistake. Always it happens, right? And it is always said that, poor me once, shame on you. Poor me twice, shame on me. So if again you buy the same product, then it's your mistake, then you cannot tell somebody else is responsible. So quality control is also be to, to be taken care of, what quality you are supplying. How supply chain is controlled? Now, how supply chain is controlled? Now, how do you think supply chain could be controlled where I cannot decide how many people will buy my clothes? Then what will happen? How do I ensure supply chain? Any thoughts? How can you ensure supply chain will be controlled? You don't know how many people will buy. So let's say, I take out a yellow color muffler or yellow color T-shirt. I thought only hundred thousand people will buy in India. And let's say, I was expecting this to entire sold it entire three, three months or six months. Let's say six months was the target to sell entire hundred thousand T-shirts. And in two weeks, entire stock is out. Now I know there is a potential to buy, to produce another two hundred thousand also. And people are giving repetitive demands to me that, okay, we want this yellow, we like this color, repeated queries and come. So how do you think I can ensure supply chain properly? What do you think? Can I increase number of machines very fast? Probably answer would be no, right? I cannot develop my supply chain quickly. So then what they do, then what does Zara do or what other entrepreneurs do generally? So they make one, they make one country where So they make one they make one country where they make manufacturing most. And then they pile up other countries where they can get it done immediately. So they will have a tie with India, China, Bangladesh. Any idea? Any idea uh out of India, China, Bangladesh? Zara gets maximum production done from where? Anyway, thought which country you think gives maximum production to Zara? Uh how much you think? So Bangladesh is right. So Bangladesh is out of uh hundred percent of Zara's production, any idea how much Bangladesh should be producing approximately? Approximately. So ninety percent would too high. Then Bangladesh will not become Bangladesh. Then it will become Spain. No, ninety percent is too high. So as uh as I mentioned, Zara always like to keep control at different places. They don't want one country to be fully and you know why is that? Despite the cheapest labor, despite the cheapest labor in Bangladesh, they don't like to do that. Any idea why they would not like to do that despite the cheapest labor? Any vague thoughts? And we know the pro uh what is the objective of finance to to maximize the shareholders' will? I can make a lot of profit if I go by Bangladesh, the cheapest cheapest labor I would ever get in textile industry. But what happens, you know, after COVID we understood, after COVID, no country, no manufacturer would like to keep all legs under one basket. They always like to diversify the portfolio. Okay, something goes wrong with Bangladesh, I have India, I have a China. Something goes wrong with China, I have Nepal. So that's what they have done. So not only in Asia, they have also gone to the other countries like like Morocco, like plan the absolute, you need to have always a plan being placed. Like Morocco or Turkey which are again or Portugal which is the cheapest country in Europe. Portugal is the most poorest country in Europe. It's a foreign country. So they have picked those areas where labor will not be issue. The moment you get extra demand, you can put there, pump the money and get the area done. Let me just give you also the statistics, how much production happens by Zara across the globe. Just give a minute. Let me get the website. So this is the latest data of how does Zara uh gets manufacturing done? So across the globe, which are the countries where Zara gets manufacturing done? Now see the interesting data here. So as I mentioned, okay, does Zara so Zara will have high items, you know, which is expensive items, which is a top wear. They are manufacturing mainly in Spain because Spain is the product, Spain is the hub, Spain is the starting point of Zara. For high-end items, they manufacture, they control the quality of high-end item. Now footwear or something which they can look into it goes to Portugal. As I mentioned, Maxim goes to Bangladesh. So Bangladesh is Maxim where they go. Then after China and then India eight percent. Now items like trendy items, quick turnaround products which you do not think much. They give to countries like Turkey, Portugal, Vietnam. So that even if something goes wrong, Cambodia which is even like basic garments, which is a very low-end items. So even if something goes wrong, you not have trip. You know, see if you buy a item of seven thousand, ten thousand rupees dress and even some small fault comes in, it pinches you. You buy a two hundred rupees socks or a handkerchief and you find some issue, will you go to the customer care and say give me return my that or you will say okay, it's fine, in textiles, all things that happens. What do you think? Even for two hundred, you will also go or you will ignore it. What do you think generally you will do? Because then as a professional, you will value your time also. You will say, oh, it's expensive. Uh let's not go there, might waste my time, small item, let it go, let's go. Now customer, how do you think in a brand industry, customer become loyalty? Okay, so first of all, who decides what to wear? Is it the company will decide what to wear or it is the customer will decide what to wear generally? What do you think? What do you think? So you want to create a product, but out of both, which one will be which one will overrule? Out of both, I agree both, it goes chicken and egg. But first, it is always the customer. It is always the customer that starts with first. From customer, then company starts trending. Okay. Now, why Zara is considered to be to be the most preferred of customers' demand? Okay, why it is to be though? Imagine imagine uh imagine a lady walks in a store and asks the storekeeper, I want a pink colored scarf. The girl asked a pink color scarf and they said, no, we don't have. And the lady gave a gave a comment, you know, customer feedback. Look, I'm a loyal Zara customer and I'm surprised why they can't have you know, pink, pink is the color loved by girls or whatever. That's she made a remark and she said, I am amused that you don't have a pink color scarf. What do you think in by listening, by giving this feedback? What did Zara would have done? So this uh on a random store, one lady walks in, look for a scarf, not find it, goes back. What do you think would have happened? Zara what would have done? They would have done? Any vague thoughts? And then you will understand why customer is the king and why only those businesses will survive who will keep customers' interest always above. If you do whatever you are doing in your mind by keeping customers. And you know what Smriti has mentioned that customer viewpoint is to be kept in mind always. You know, why is that so important? Why customer viewpoint is always? The first golden thumb rule is customer is always right. Okay. Second rule is, why are we in this business? Am I in the business to please myself or to sell to my customers? What is important? My ego is important that I am the best or I will win only when customers is right. When customer says, okay, Sumit is best. If customer says my product is best, then I am the best. I go on top of the F L tower or Booz Khalifa and start shouting, I am the best, I am the best, nobody will believe. But one customer will say, okay, Sumit product is good, he is a good manufacturer, his product are very good. That is your actual advertisement, that is your actual reward. So customer will always believe in. Now what they did? And so so Sunil, within within how many months you think it would have been in the product list? So you are right, Zara have taken that in product list. Then how many months you think? Uh months, years, days, they would have done it. How much time is Sumit pay? How much time? So problem statement you got it? Within a week. Have you, what do you think, Smriti? Sunil says within a week it should be in the product. What is your view? To do an idea, undertake a research will take long time or no? What do you think? In a research, what will happen?
Sir, I am not sure about this. Uh it may not be uh very too early or it may not take much of time but uh I am still not sure how much it may have taken. Any how much it may take?
Anyway, guess so. We are just talking guesswork, just talking guesswork.
Acha, it is in between. I mean uh I mean not uh very uh immediately or neither too late.
Uh if you can read on screen, if if it is visible to read on screen, one notable instance of Zara's responsibility took customer need occurred when a simple request of pink scarf went beyond individual preferences. Zara took its fast fashion, you know, what they say is that we are the fastest in fashion ethos. So last one customer request into a global product launch within a mere seven days. Now you understand the point which I am trying to explain, seven days into global product.
So it's their mission statement that they have uh uh followed by.
Absolutely. And and the only those organization who follow their mission, vision will work on. For us, you know, I'll be very honest, when when I started my practice and used to go to Bombay, I used to see mission where vision at many places and I used to think it just for sake sake of writing. But then I met few entrepreneurs, I met few companies, they live by that and they say we will only survive till we follow the mission or vision. Even if it is causing loss to us, we will go by that because that's the vision yes to them.
Yes, yes.
And that is you. Now you can see just a one request of a lady, seven days, entire customer. So they not only listen to customer but act promptly, turning into well manner. And see how much they would have done. So this was a story on that, I am not able to speak. They sold they sold five hundred pink scarves, five hundred pink scarves tend to be precise. And 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 just see the last line, read the last line, that is most important in the screen. Seven days later, seven days later, last para, seven days later, two thousand Zara stores started selling pink scarves globally. They were five lakh, you know, imagine five lakh scarves and sold out within three days. What does that call for? Because when when this that's a demand and people were looking for. Just because your designer did not like pink color does not mean pink is not in fashion, right? You know, pink is generally considered to be confused color, you know. Should it be only female oriented? If a male buys, it becomes a challenge little bit.
Yes.
But then but then that's the way you need to look into the customer's demand demand and do that. So this is what our feedback is to be taken. That's what our feedback has to be taken seriously. And those companies who take feedback seriously can and listen to the customer's point of view will always succeed. With ultimately the only the person who is wearing the shoe can tell where it is biting. Others, see armchair consultant can give any consultancy, but who is the best consultant, whose opinion is the best? The one who is actually using it. If a customer comes and give you a feedback, one should always take always take positively. So they follow they follow their mission on customer-centric innovation. Whatever customer is told, they try to follow that. They want to maintain their quality as a differentiator by having robust process. Please, please. Please, Smriti, go ahead.
Sir, we have got this seven thirty our president's address.
It's seven thirty. Yeah, we can uh we can break now and come back when the address gets finished. That is important.
Acha, is that fine? Ah, yes, sir.
Uh Deepak sir, can we break for ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
Yes, sir, you can take break break for ten minutes.
Yeah, and then we will resume after that. Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Now, as I mentioned, one of the key skills they had was speed to market strategy. What is the speed to market strategy? Imagine someone gives it, someone gives a design, someone gives that I want a pink scarf and within seven days. Entire two thousand stores across the globe, their product was available. Think of the minimum time between design creation and availability. How agile their production cycle could be. Had it been a normal, okay, we will look into it, put the file, I will check which pink color, no, pink has thousand colors. So I look into it, what pink, shall we go for scarf or not? You could have taken so much time to make a decision. Whereas someone from customer has demanded and that demand you understood because ultimately customer is the king. So. And then seamless, seamless, seamless integration between design, production and distribution. So this is very important. So what they do is. So this is very important. So what they do is the feedback they directly give to the person who is a design team. So the customer care does not sit with the customer. The customer care, you know, the reception guy or someone who is an outsourced. Their feedback directly goes to the person who designed. So in a fashion industry. The clothes designers are the most important product, most of persons because they understand the product very well. And to understand the product, they take feedback and that's what they have taken and that's what they are doing. Now. How how good sales you can have? So you need to have our interaction online as we understand you need to be systems. So they have systems, they have high end SAP or ERP system. You need to have a digital integration and delivery. Now online presence, only channel present should be anywhere. If you are online, it does not matter whether you are sitting in Mumbai, Jaipur or New Zealand or Dubai or London. So online product they have done. Each state generally they go with one city. Support for one day delivery expectations now. If I buy something online and I am getting after a week. I may, it may help me, it may not help me. Tomorrow I need to go for a wedding or tomorrow I need to go for a function and today I went online, I saw something good and Zara clothes. If they can offer me, okay, I will give you tomorrow in twenty four hours, I will be more likely to buy that product. Because it is matching my expectations, the utility could be fulfilled and managed. And then real time inventory management fulfillment system. So as I mentioned, having two thousand stores, you need to know which store the stock is selling a fast, which store stock is not selling. So let's say I have a stores in Jaipur, Delhi, Mumbai, Hyderabad. Everywhere I have put two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty products. But what if, but what if. In Jaipur and Delhi, maybe due to summers, the product is not picking up. In Mumbai and Hyderabad, due to different weather conditions, the product is picking up very fast. So if if it has moved very fast in Jaipur and in Delhi, in Hyderabad and Mumbai. And we are not able to, we are not able to sell this in other parts Rajasthan and Delhi and Jaipur. Then smartness would be to shift, smartness would be to shift the product from Jaipur, Delhi and because I have limited, I have. I have excess supply here, inventory is there. And since we have a limited product, we don't make too much product for that to avoid pileup of inventory. We like to have this real time inventory management system, that way it will always help the custom. Now how do they identify? What is the marketing communication analytics? Always customer preference should be identified and as we discussed the first. How do we decide what you are going to wear by your choice? So we first see what the customer preference is. And customers get, customers get swayed by another custom. So it's like a a catch twenty two, one after the other, one customer will start wearing one two. So color, if colors look fine, everybody starts asking for the same color and then it becomes a trend. Then you need to understand what you are selling in India may not work in other parts of the world. Or what you are selling in Europe may not work here, like some places people prefer dark colors. In some places they prefer light colors based on northern hemisphere, like what dress you like, you see in Europe. That color you will not work in this part of the world and vice versa. And second, when you are making a product. You cannot make a T-shirt or a shirt which a twenty year old can wear at the same time. A sixty year old can wear at the same time to differentiate something you need to understand the demographics. Where people are staying, what kind of location, whether the whether the size area is windy, cold, chilly, based on that. Yeah, I have, okay, camera is off, just give me. And you need to track the trends and feedback social media listening tool. And how do we track the track by social media listening tool? Because just give me all the videos. Just a second, let me check on video, how does it works, just give me, yeah, fine. You need to figure out social media trends and based on social media trends. You can always figure out how the crowd, you know, that's why, that's why if you see. That's why if you see all all companies who are into customer interaction. They have some of the channels on Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, you name any channel, any social media, Twitter. They have their their official representatives there. So they can easily listen your voice and start doing that. And analyze what's selling in real time and that is very important for any marketing person to understand. Because whatever is in real time selling, if you can sell that, you don't need to do less efforts. If something which is not selling in real time, you need to create efforts. Again, you need to understand one strategy. It does not mean something is not selling, does not mean there is no space, there is no place for you to sell, you can always sell that. But but you need to put efforts in doing that, there you don't need to do efforts, it is already there. Now. E S C, I am sure you all would have heard of E S C. Environment, social governance. Sustainability is the top of the town, top of the world. Can you assume everybody would have heard sustainability, everybody is working towards sustainability. And what is sustainability? Sustainability is like. Now such I I traveled to four countries in last one month. And trust me, in every country. The conferences, whatever conferences I attend, the starting point and the end point was only sustainability. It is all about E S C. I was surprised that not only in India. Uh I went to, I I went to Dubai, I went to Qatar, I went to Bahrain. Everybody is talking only of sustainability that we, how we should work on E S C. India has taken a very fast pace. Now why sustainability is being talked? The concept is very simple, the concept is is uh is we have borrowed the earth from our future generation. So we are not giving earth to them, we are borrowing earth from them. So we need to give them in a good shape so that they can at least live. So now there are certain customers who will buy only from those vendors. Who are using something sustainable things. Let's say if you use, if you remember, if you would have ordered few months back or few years back from Amazon, Flipkart. You used to get a lot of plastic material. Remember a long time back, there was so much of plastic material. Now, now you will see, you will find them uh uh the covers into packaging, covers into wood, paper covers. Or very less plastic which can be reusable or recyclable. So because lot of customers said I will buy, I will, packing has changed fundamentally and I. We are doing a lot of research on packaging, we have seen a lot of work on packaging. You can't even imagine the way the government, the Europe is going on packaging, you will be surprised. From first January twenty twenty six in Europe. Plastic packaging has been banned in certain online channels that you cannot use for lasting packaging for delivery. You need to shift into a paper packaging. So that's why industries has to change. So Zara and in textile industry is known to be the, one of the top contributors in. In 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 polluting the environment. Any idea why why textile industry is known to be one of the most polluting in environment? After coal and others. After thermal powers and coal. Anyone has any seen during your audit how textile is manufactured? Packaging is very small part, packaging is very small part in that. Though you know in packaging, you need to have plastics or no, one is waste material before waste material. To make the yarn, to make the yarn, the kind of kind of wasted it happens and then to make it color it. You know, how does a white yarn gets into color? You color that into whatever color you want, that kind of, it it goes through so much of, so much of uh processes. The kind of water it is used, the kind of water it is used to wash the yarn. Remember the wool which is collected from sheeps and and cottons are not pure white, they are full of dirt. So lot of lot of water and energy is spent on getting it processed. So now they look for those products who can say, okay, we are sustainable, we know we are making errors. But we will also try to benefit the environment by putting extra trees or something like that. And that's why they look for sustainability, they try to go for innovation every time. And most of the times they said, okay, now we will not put plastic bags or something, they are trying to stop it so that it should not harm the environment. Because there are conscious consumers which have emerged though the speed is low but customers is is coming. And you need to ensure quality and pricing should always be kept in mind. If you tell a customer that I will give you a sustainable product, give me twenty rupees extra, generally what do you think? Customer will give or customer will say, no, no, I am fine with. Whatever product you are selling, what do you think? If you tell a customer, I will charge you for making a sustainable product, do you think he will agree? He will not agree. Do we agree as a customer mindset? If I give a customer two options, one is normal and one is I charge you extra premium for giving you sustainable. Then he says, okay, you give me normal sustainability is a, is the job of the government to take care. You gave me the lowest price because when I am paying shedding out money, I would like to always think of my pocket. Environment will come for me later, that's a mindset. So therefore they they say, they say, no, no, uh Smithy, we need to understand why, why I am saying that to you. Okay, uh tell me when you book a ticket online, when you book a ticket online. Most of the times you see a a checkbox that if you pay ten rupees extra, CO two will be emitted. What do you think? How many customers would be choosing that? What do you think? My friend is an Indigo internal CFO, so I can tell you the data. What do you think? How many customers would be choosing that? Anyone would have seen the, anyone would have seen while booking a ticket. Uh they ask if you pay ten rupees extra, you will save CO two or even if you book on Zomato or somewhere. Very few would agree, right? Because when you say that I will charge you to save the planet and say, I will say, okay, why, why should you charge me? I am the customer, it is your duty which uh which entrepreneur will not take it. Entrepreneur will say, I am making the product for you. So everything goes back on you. So that way it becomes difficult. And that's why it is called greenwashing that you know, you don't tell customer that you are charging him for making sustainable. Why to pay extra? Absolutely. Then that's why, that's why, that's why they are making it mandatory, that no, no, you need to get this done. You need to get things, you need to have solar power plant, you need to have clean water facilities. Then it will not be shown as extra and that's the way you need to ensure pricing need to be managed and this is what you need to ensure. Customer should not feel offended that I am, I am not the one who has taken, you know. Duniya kar theka maine thon legega customer will come back to you with this argument. Because we have seen a lot in this kind of statements. Now. What do you think iPhone? Uh so what they do is they did a global presence strategic questioning. They're, they put in Belgium, they compete with other markets. Every year twenty thousand designs they showcase. Imagine, imagine uh imagine a company, textile company, brand showing twenty thousand designs. Now you see why in two weeks they turn around? Why in two weeks they clarify? Imagine twenty thousand designs I need to have across the globe. So that's why they show, they create a art skill, artist scarcity they create. That okay, in two weeks, three weeks feature will change the product and that's why they they showcase so many designs. So they will again bring that the same item after one year. But because if if something is not run in two years, that's what they do and that's why it always comes in play. Now. Just a second. Now. You know, like iPhone sixteen comes and then iPhone sixteen Pro comes or Max comes, right? Even in iPhone, you give two versions, one Pro, one normal. Why they do that? One Pro, one normal, why can't they put one only? Or. Yeah, you, you are. Uh if you recall sometime when iPhone Gold came in, then we will give you iPhone Gold. Have you seen that? When it came iPhone Gold, it is in gold plated. When iPhone Black was there for more features or or we all have different type of customers. One customer would be a premium customer, one would be extra premium customer. So in V I P, so we have V I P, then we have V V I P. We have H N Is and then we have ultra H N Is, right? So there would be someone who would be feeling no. So what does this this brand do? Okay, for India market, let me keep this pricing. Because it's India market is sensitive market and my target customer is only urban, urban professionals who are working professionals. So I will keep them a mid price because who are very price sensitive. But when I am also selling in in Europe, my customer in Europe is matured customer. My purchasing power is high in Europe. So something which I sell in, let's say five hundred rupees in India, let's say, I will select fifteen hundred rupees in Euro. And that's why where you earn money both sides. You do not destroy the name of brand Zara that in, can we say in India Zara is cheap? Probably no. They maintain their price, but if you compare the price of Zara globally. You will find Zara in India is much cheaper, much lower and that's why you will be surprised, you will be surprised. Many people from Dubai, Gulf come to India and always buy products of Zara from here. Despite they have Zara in in their country, respective countries, they buy here. Why? Because customer always knows if I can get the same quality, if I get in the same product at a cheaper price here, why should not I buy from here? And that's way they play on and that's why they have different pricing model. That okay for affordable customers have a different. But give them a premium perception. Now you understand? I am giving a perception, perception. You are giving a person that you are buying the best quality at an affordable price, that's a perception if you. And where you have a target customers which have brand positioning which is expensive, you give them expensive. Now at times, what do you think? How does the price that gets decide? Price depends on what customers must give, right? So if I sell a Gucci purse, if I sell a Gucci bag at a very cheap price. Do you think? The customers will love it? The end user, the real customers who love, use it, they love it or they will not like the product. Let's say a Gucci bag and like we used to come as let's or Chanel. Which used to come at let's say a thousand dollars, let's say a thousand dollars. If I make it low cost production and say, let me give you at, let me give the Gucci bag at uh. Uh thousand, thousand dollar at one thousand dollars. Lowest cost cutting, what do you think the end user will like? If I, if I reduce the price, Prashant, you think in India they will like it? You believe so? You believe so, Prashant? You think so? Okay. See, the best part is you think, that's most important, someone should think. Right or wrong will always the time will tell and the market will tell. You and I are not the right person, the market is the right person. So Prashant, uh you remember Tata Nano? Remember the Nano? The cheapest car claimed to be the cheapest car in 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 the world. Cheapest car in the world, not only in India, in the world. What do you think? The sales of Nano's car affected? What do you think? Is the sales of Nano's car affected? Or did not sold much? Any idea? It did not sold much. Why it did not sold much? And there's a very big case study on this, very good case study on this, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a Harvard case study now and it's a strategic case study. What, in in India. Do you think car was a necessity or car was a luxury in India? No, no, product appealed a lot. First you tell me in India, car used to be considered a necessity or luxury generally in India. It used to be a luxury, it used to be always a luxury. But when if I tell you I am giving you the cheapest car. Does it, does it still remain in luxury or becomes uh anyone can afford it, then why I should buy it? Then it is not a luxury. You understand the mindset where it actually defaulted? The way it was branded that it is the cheapest car, that actually destroyed the entire market segment. Because in India, people like to own car to shock others. You agree? Do we agree generally? And I am saying general talking and I am talking where like to shock, okay, I have Mercedes, I have Audi, I have BMW. You like to showcase other than this is the, this is the showcase of your will. When Nano which was coming at the most affordable price. When Nano which was coming at the most affordable prices ideally and you know when the, when the sales plan was budgeted, everybody said. We have so many people in India, so many people in India, we should buy that. Because reliance mobile phone was cheaper than postcard. Why? Because that was a necessity. That was, everybody has a phone call, phone at your home, you know, people used to have phones. Now, but the car was considered a luxury product. Similarly. Gucci bag was considered a luxury or necessity, Gucci bag. Generally. What do you think? It's a luxury. So if you sell something luxury at a cheaper price, it may not help it, it may not help it, right? So, so that's why when you, when you have a different customers, you need to sell at a premium price and that's what where you make the money. So that was where they have the, they know the way to make value, where to make money. And that's why they made a dual strategy that okay, in Asia, uh, where we have middle class, which is the largest market segment. We are always finicky to price, so keep an attractive price. And that is the reason why you will see at many times you, you would have seen price of nine ninety-nine. You know, what does, uh, you would have seen prices of nine ninety-nine, point nine nine. What difference does it make? It would be a thousand only, but, but why is that? Why is that? Psychologically, three figure looks better to pay or four figure looks better to pay? Psychologically, the moment you add a comma, number one, it looks four digits, it looks expensive. Even though, it is psychological pricing, absolutely, and that's what the, that's what the people look into it who makes strategy, how to put pricing. So they say price below market to attract price sensitive customers. And by selling in India or selling in any market, you get a maximum share, that's what you move on. Where you have and always have, when you want a product, you need to sell generally for women, men, children. Now these are, they can be different argument and different theories, but the successful theory is. If you are into cycle, if you are into retail brands or customer brand, you need to give all this together, you need to make product for. Men, women, children, any idea why we need to make, why not only focus on women or men? So you have less quantity or easy, any idea? Any idea? Family shops together. If I am going to take my spouse with shopping or my spouse with me, what the other will do? Where you'll take a place where everybody has its own, everybody has different, 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 different. Uh, everybody has a different, different choices. Then your sale will be higher and it will be, it will be easier. Because I would not like to go for, for shopping for myself where the time gets wasted a lot. And when you are in one roof, you can easily get things done and then you give a bulk deal, you know, then you give a deal. If you buy together ten thousand rupees product, I'll give you one thing extra, then you will try to collate and do that. And that's what you need to design, serve a broader base. Price fix according to that and do penetration testing. Always, whenever there are four piece of marketing product, so you have a product which is for all areas. Pricing, do a penetration pricing based on region specific. Promotion and that's why you would have seen, uh, you have, you would have heard on pricing, why pricing is important point. iPhone is cheaper in India or cheaper in US? Same iPhone, you would have seen a lot of people goes to US and the request comes to US, people are going to US. Once you are coming back, get one iPhone for me if they have availability. So because of different, different pricing, different places you do it. You need to promote and promotion comes from, promotion comes from customers and. The Zara, when they open the products, they put enough. Their, their place, their showrooms are at a very prime place. Their physical stores speak itself. Once you ever pass through Zara store, you can see a differentiation. These are elegant, elegant product, elegant showrooms designed. Across the globe, you will find the same design in terms of that prime location. You will see all the customers or all the salesperson wearing same dress. And that's what you do a branding that okay, all people are wearing same dress, it gives a different edge of, of company. They have zero advertising policy as we mentioned. They generally do not do any advertising, you will not find any TV ads. Maximum ads they will do on, they will do on some magazine, somebody will ask for a photos or that, they do that. Instead of that, they say we will spend more money in giving discounts while opening new stores, giving offers. And what happens to give a loyal customer? Do you, anybody who would be shopper, shopper stop customers generally in India? Do you get messages at time that we are, we are offering sale, there is a pre-sale invitation to you? Do you get at times this offer when someone, uh, when you have a, uh, cards of uh. Any shopper stop, uh, shopping card and all you get this. So when you get this message, do you really, sometimes you feel little bit special that oh, I got a privilege. That when people will be buying the after tomorrow, I've got a chance to buy today, I'll have better opportunities. So these are certain ways to induce customers to make him feel special and get it back to the birthday offers and all and then it get back to them. And, and you will be surprised on your birthdays, more than your friends, you will get wishes from all mutual funds, all. Shopper stops or all whatever you purchase, they will remember you and tell you more. So this is how to make them feel important and when someone remembers you on your birthday and give you some offer, you at least try to go if it is, if you are actually using that product. Absolutely. The promoter of this company was, is the ninth richest man globally. He never spoken to media or never engage any personal brand promotion, he never promoted his brand. And he always says that his logic was my product will speak for itself, I don't need to do that. So, so uh, thanks Smriti, when I told you sale in India itself is two thousand seven hundred crore. Is this a big number? It's a massive number, right? So we are talking of only India. Now take the globe, take the globe and think where the sale would be. More than three billion dollar, three billion dollar is the sale of Zara. So you can imagine even if he makes, even if he makes ten percent, you can imagine how much billion he is making every year. And that to a country, you know, across the globe, that's what they work at. Whenever you go to in their store, it becomes a marketing tool. Because the ones, if you are visiting a physical store, you will always remember how you are treated and that's where you, you feel. So they have eleven and thirteen radio shows, ninety-three countries, total two thousand places now. You store as a marketing channel, they give you best service in the store. Whenever you visit a store, you will feel like you are a king. They will give you a huge, huge value, huge importance. Somebody will be standing next to you always to make you feel that you are special and you are come. Even if you do not buy, you go to Zara, do a just window shopping, do trial and error, don't even buy a single floor. You will receive the same respect, you will not be treated as, oh, why you wasting your time? No, it's okay, don't like it, that's fine, we'll get another product. Employee presentation, every employee wears same uniform, which gives a strong issue. Now just we talked on marketing, so this is online offline marketing. So where you are visiting the store, another is offline, uh, online marketing where you sell. What is the biggest challenge in online marketing? Few biggest challenges in online marketing, what do you think? When we talk of online marketing, what are the few challenges you feel? In online marketing, online sales. Online sales of, uh, online sales of textile, brand clothes, textiles, what is the biggest challenge? If I am selling any apparel online, what do you think is the biggest challenge? Any idea? For online, what are the challenges? Finding customers. Customer you can easily find by giving a discount, your discount customer will be there. Product looks, looks real, so you need to tell them touch and feel product that becomes a challenge, okay? Recognition due to much competition and absolutely right, the biggest challenges, how many? If you ever search on a Google, if you ever search on a Google, did you ever went to second page or third page ever? As you want to search on any particular topic, any particular thing. Have you ever gone on second, third or fourth page? Who will, will give you thousand pages? Do you ever go more than second, third page, fourth page? Barely, very rare or first page will be sufficient, right? Now think of a, think of conviction to buy the product, there may be missing, absolutely. So think of a e-commerce platform, I go to Amazon, I go to Flipkart, search I want to buy a tie or buy a jacket. Will I go to third, fourth pages or only first few pages? Maximum first or second page maximum. Do you think I have that much time? Generally, a customer will have that much time to render to all pages and so. So he will look into the customer rating, he will look into the first page. Now once you get, or once you are on the first page because you have a brand, the biggest challenge is sales return. And because I given you offer of, because I given you offer of sales return, first we will say enough. Now sales return will be generally, how much percentage you think is sales return? Generally, how much percentage you think? If I sell hundred items, generally, how much you think is a sales return in a apparel industry generally? Any percentage wise? It is thirty percent, twenty-five to thirty percent is the average, twenty-five to thirty is the average sales return in across apparel group, twenty-five to thirty is the average, okay? Now, any idea what could be the, the major reason of sales return? What could be the major reason? What do you think would be the major reason of sales return? What do you think generally? There are two major reasons of sales return. What it could be? Two major reason. One is color, and first is fitting mismatch and second is color. That two reasons are one, you ordered large, they have given you Excel or they have given double Excel. Or you ordered small, they would have given medium. Had this have happened to you, those would have ordered any clothes, your size got changed, fitting mismatch. Whatever you have ordered, they have distributed, they have picked, so that is the first reason. Second is color, on the screen when you are showing it was looking. A green, when it comes to me, it is blue or different color. That has it also happened, on the screen it was looking very good, but when you actually opened, brought it to physical, not meeting the expectations, right? So these are the purely two reasons people return this. You know, we don't have a, we don't have that kind of customer mindset. Even if that could be, that would be very, very limited, very, very minor, very minor, so that is beyond accountable and they know we are happy to have such small segment. Majority incidents are happening due to fitting mismatch and all. Now what did the Zara have done? They say, okay. When you go to their website, when you go to their website, there will be, when you go to the website, they will be doing. Uh, showing the best colors, their, their three D mechanism is so good. That whatever you are getting in your hand, you will exactly see that. And then they have ordered that they try to keep their sizes so, so open and so common that it should not have a confusion. So when they are selling at a, from packing at the stores, it should exactly match that right size, the right number should become on. So these are certain things, these online, these apparel people keep to this, to ensure that they give the right approach. So they, they product range is supposed to be sell globally. Their pricing may discuss, it should be always edge over competitors and they generally always charge higher. It's not the cheaper, they charge higher from the rest of the world. Pricing is market sensitive and as I mentioned, they align with customer needs. So in India where pricing is very high, they will, they go for normal price. But in case of other spot, they maximize returns, as in, as I mentioned in Europe, it is expensive. We take now. They always have done vertical integration and supply chain agility, as I mentioned. Uh. Now they have a retail innovation every time. Minimize time from design to store. So within two weeks, whatever they design comes to the store. Whereas industry takes several months, it takes six, six months of industry to design. If you have seen bigger brands, they take six months to design. You know, you have seen earlier, if you, if you are a little bit aware of fashion earlier, there is to be Milan week in Italy, Paris fashion week. Based on these fashion weeks which are used to happen, six, six months gap, the designs would come. Something would come in Paris or something called in Milan Fashion Week. Six months later, the design would come back to the shop store. They are giving in two weeks and we have seen the example of seven days also, they have turned the pink scarf and in three days the entire demand got over. Now how did they achieve this? They do not outsource, they set up their plant. So Zara would have set up their plant in, in Bangladesh, in India, so that they can make it faster. Vertical integration, they have full control, so. End to end and back to back, so I know if I need to have a thread, I need to have. Uh, machines, I need to have all this end to end, back to back, so everything is, everything is under their control. Enable, because of this, everything is under your control, rapid response to the market trends and customer demand shifts. Otherwise you will not be able to meet customer demands with a which is fast speed, everything is under your control, you can eventually take decisions. And that was required in any fashion industry. Now, let's say according to you. Which one you think would be given to Bangladesh for manufacturing? What do you think? Between the skirt, which is a little bit expensive product and which is, and rather a jeans. Which one you think they would have given for mass production in Bangladesh? Out of these two, which one you think Zara would have said you manufacture this? To Bangladesh manufacturing plant? In bulk quantity. Whether it be uh. Vedaj, it is the other way around, it is the other way around. They have gone for jeans, so you have any idea why jeans project works for you? Because common sense works for expensive also that you know it is a cheaper labor. Remember, if you remember Madhavan, I don't know you were joined at time of reset. Though Bangladesh has the cheapest labor, but still they only do twenty percent, they do not do all production there. Now why jeans? Because they say it is a low end item, even if something goes wrong in any manufacturing, you can still manage it. But the skirt which is the, one of the premium items, premium product. If we go and give to Bangladesh quality controls damage happen, we will not be able to make it up. And remember goodwill brands are bought born in years, it does not take a day, it does not take a month, it takes years to build a reputation. And the moment one negative issue happen, it works. We would be, won't be possible, we will. No, because in case of skirt, right, it's not possible. My elegant product of, my elegant product of female is skirt and if they say, oh, it has a manufacturing issues. How, how easy today's social media? Ten years back, this could be washed, wish wash away, nobody will come to know under the sun. Today it just take you one minute to put on LinkedIn, Twitter, social, Facebook. Zara is losing its quality, then what will happen? The brand value decreases and once the brand value decreases, can you command a premium when my brand value decreases? Certainly no, I can only command premium when my brand value is there and that's why they, they ensure which product to be given to whom. Remember if I, I showed you a chart where which country high-end products they show and it is only for that, because they say their brand should not get impacted. Now, because they have the short lead time to reflect latest fashion trend, that's why they have agile business model. Limited production runs, minimize risk of unsold inventory. Exit, fast exit from unpopular design, so that's why I said, two weeks they are out from the market, two weeks. Emphasize trend alignment, not mass, so they say not mass, so. If I, if you know there is a limited product, you go and rush it because you know demand will be over. Because it is not for the mass and as we all agree, we don't want to look like a mass. We agree? Even psychologically, we don't like to look like a mass, we want to look little bit separate from the mass. That's why we want to maintain our own identity and keep collections fresh and in demand, so it looks that okay, it is in demand. So you manufacture in Asia, wherever you think you can save money for quick verticals to have increased supply, they can do that. Mobile app, they have their own mobile app. And they started with mobile app, now nowadays they started with other countries where you are buying iPhone or other products, their app will also come. And they started with mobile app, now, nowadays, they started with other countries where you are buying iPhone or other products, their app will also come. Imagine you are buying a, buying a mobile and your app is coming there, will it support you in increasing your sales? Generally, I may not go and start downloading all apps, but if some app is already installed, will it give me some boost up in my sale? Yes, no, maybe? What do you think? Something which is already downloaded in your app, for sure it will give you, for sure. Because the probability of buying is much, much faster. Well, to download an app requires a lot of grit. It makes, it is difficult to ensure, to, to persuade customers to download your app. But if something is already downloaded in your app, helps you. Be negative with someone that, okay, please download our app, put your app in system. Absolutely, Chandra Bhiria. And then your sales grows because that's your business. In India, they have thousand head, head employees across different plants. So, they have plant in Delhi, they have plant in Bangalore, they have plant in Tirumur, Tirumur in south. They have a leave policy of thirty-five days, privileged leave, fifteen days sick leave, ten days casual leaves. So, generally, any organization, you have a leave carry forward, ten days P L and five days S L. If you don't have a leave carry forward, then what happens? Then customer, then employees will take maximum leaves during the year. Because if you are not allowing me to carry forward, then even if I don't require, I'll take a leave. So, many places, they keep certain buffer to carry forward and then you need to use, otherwise it gets lapsed. Employee benefit usage, they have taken ten days P L and five days S L. Two hundred employees have taken five days P L and today's U L. Profit distribution, they have two thousand crore profit. Employee shares four percent of profits and three point five percent due to turnover adjusted. So, employee got twenty crores in a year. They have defined contribution fund, employee benefit plan, that is gratuity. Due within twelve months from accounting period, that's what you pay every year. They take C S R initiatives, they issue shares to NGO. Now, either I can fund NGO, so in India, generally, you will not see this trend, in India, you not see generally that somebody gives shares to NGO, right? But what if, if I am a very high-profile company, I am a profitable company, instead of giving one lakh rupee donation. What if I give them one lakh shares, one lakh rupees worth shares? And when I am a profitable company, every year I am making profit, will that it help? Because then whenever I get a dividend, I distribute it, the trust will get it, the trust's value will increase. So, globally, this is a trend globally, in India, you will not find much because of various, letting, various laws and difficult. But they donate shares to NGO. Now, they also issue shares to shareholders, employees, uh, you too, you give shares to employees so that they remain. Now, they acquired a plant in India and they purchased some machines, you all would have got this case study, so there will be question coming on case studies, right? It always builds trust when you are giving a stick to employee, so there is a saying that if your skin is in the game, then you will always work hard. When you know you are also a shareholder in the company, you are also, if you perform, company perform, you will get a return in, in that. Because you are also a shareholder, even though you are a minor shareholder, but you are still shareholder, the level of working becomes different. You agree? If you work like a normal employee and work with employee who has some share in the company, your mindset will change. Definitely changes, it gives you a different, a different kick. So, you purchase some machines, uh, can I assume that you all would have, you all would have got case study, so you would have gone with numbers you have. That you purchase at eighty lakhs, U T five lakh, delivery piece one lakh, distortion ten lakhs, five lakhs, seven lakhs, discount in all these numbers. So, can I ask one question on India sixteen? I will not ask this question, because you have this question already with you, right? Let me ask one question on this. I purchase a machine and the machine, as, let's say, I got this machine from German, uh, Spain, let's say, this is a machine you got it from Spain. Uh, it is expensive machine, uh. Uh, this, this can produce any product, any quantity. To know how to operate this machine, I send one of my staff to Spain. For training cost, but go there and learn how to operate that machine. He went there, learn, it is just like, just like imagine, imagine you, you install a sap, you install a one crore rupees sap software. And you, nobody in your organization knows how to run sap. So, you send your employee to Germany or Mumbai or, you know, one-on-one training, how to learn sap and he went there. So, something I need to learn and operate this machine, I went, sent my employee to learn how to operate this machine. This training cost, will you capitalize or you will expense off? What is your view? As per India sixteen? What do you think? You can go to the books later on, just I am asking a question based on your common reasoning. Logically, what do you think should be done as per India's? What do you think? Yes, no, maybe? Based on given limited information. What do you think? The training cost which you have sent an employee to learn how to operate this eighty lakhs machine. What should be done? Any thoughts? We will add, not add. So, you need to tell me if capitalize, why should we capitalize, if not, why to not do? So, we got two views. So, you will say it should be capitalized, Midat says, neither say, so Midaj is the right pronunciation, Midaj, right? Neither says it should be expensed off. Okay. Now. So, we got one-one vote, anyone has a casting vote? To settle this, should we capitalize or it should be expensed? That's the confidence Alex Smith, it should be capitalized, it should be capitalized, okay? So, what will happen, Smriti, if that employees leave and I need to get new employee to go, go for training? What should I do then? Employee whom I gave a training left. You agree I cannot hold my employee? Answer would be no. Does born can stop him? That's a question, can the born stop him? That's what I'm saying, can the agreement stop him as per the right to article constitution, free will to work, right to work? With cost, I'll pay with cost. But then the question is, but there's a question, then what you will do? He left. He left then what? So, your bond will be over period, one year, two years? What do you think, Surin? How much would be your bond? One year, two years, three years or entire ticket? More than one year, court will not permit, more than one year generally, court will not agree your bond. If he leaves after one year then? Okay, what is the, what is the? So, answer would be it will not be capitalized, now, now, why it should not be capitalized first? What does the law says for capitalization? Was the product ready to use? Is the mo- is the machine, is in a position ready to use? Yes, no, maybe? My capitalization stops when, when the machine is ready to use. First, Smriti, you do not know how to use is your problem, not the machine's problem. Was the machine fit to use? You don't know how to operate, that's your problem.
Sorry, sir, sorry to interrupt, uh, uh, I want to understand this question of yours. Uh, ready to use, was the, uh, machine ready to use? So, uh, how to, uh, analyze this, uh?
So, so was the machine complete in its, in its own? If somebody had an.
I, it was, uh, it was, uh, I mean, condition wise, it's whole, it's complete.
Correct. Only you don't know how to start it. Because that is from, that is, so the machine process does not have a problem. How to utilize that, that is a problem, because how do you take this benefit, that's a issue, right? So, so in case of boring cost, I, in this twenty-three, how long we can capitalize the cost? As long as it is fit to use, so you was fit to use, it was ready to use, but you have not used. So, I'll give you example, let's say, let's say I got this machine, okay, on first January, first April twenty twenty-four, I got this machine. I don't know a person to use it, right? Entire whole year, I could not find a person to use it, okay? Now, you tell me, will you charge a depreciation or no? Not yet used.
Depreciation should be charged.
But fine, I, I agree, it will be charged, but again, the logic would be, did you use it? Answer is no, we have not used it. But because, but because the time value of money and because of.
Time, passage of time.
Care of time, we are in tear due to time, it has depreciated, the world will seem to be depreciated, even if you have not used it. The world will say, it is a second end now, you know, if I come and, come and ask you after one year, uh, Smriti, I want to buy this machine, will you say? Uh, it has not been used at all, will be fresher, pay me the same price, I will say, no, no, Smriti, even if you have not used, generally, I know you have not used. For me, it's a second end, right? Because of passage of time and machine effect. So, in India, India sixteen, what does this say? And they have specifically mentioned not to capitalize in India sixteen, any training cost and any admin cost on. Making the asset usage is not, for two reasons why it is not permitted, one is standard self said, second. You cannot bind the employee, employee can always go, if you get another employee tomorrow. You learn the train name, you cannot keep on adding the cost, so that's why it will not be added, okay?
So, it is specifically being said in the standard, uh.
Absolutely, absolutely, in this, in this one-one-six, specificity same, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Now, there is a famous transaction also here. They sold a real estate transaction, they sold a land in Mumbai. The broker is in USA, the buyer is also a USA, the buyer is also a USA. But he is classified as a resident in India, because it is controlled from India one company. The sale price is seven hundred thousand dollars, somewhere around five point five eighty crore, that's a transaction. You need to give him seven percent of sales proceed, that is approx forty-one lakhs. Now. If I am giving a money to outlet India, do I need to take R V approval or I can scale without taking any permission, I can give money? Can I remit to him or I need to take R V approval? What is your view? Any idea? So, these are the cases I have given to you. I'll take two case, which was, which was not given to you earlier, which was not shared at the time when the material would have received to you. Tell me, what do you think based on income tax, what will happen in this? Shareholder of this company is G India. So, understand this question because this will impact you at many places. In income tax and in real life, in your family, somebody is having a company and selling, you can at least guide them. H G India is an Indian company. One of their shareholder, Mister A. They want to sell share of this company to another resident shareholder of India, so another shareholder, Mister B is there. The fair value of equity shares of H G India, as per rule eleven U of income tax, is hundred and twenty rupees. Though the fair value is hundred and twenty, but A and B. B was a very good negotiator, so B said to A, at the best, I can give you hundred rupees. The deal is take it or leave it, if you take it at hundred, I will sell you, if you don't take it at hundred, I will not take any further negotiation. Mister A was in huge demand, he is needy, he, he needs money for some personal reasons. So, he said, whatever money comes in, I'll sell it, though the fair value he knows is one twenty, but he sold at hundred, this is the deal they have closed. The A actually purchased this at twenty rupees, whenever he is actually acquired, it was his cost was twenty. Now, you tell me, out of this four, which one you think is the best answer? What do you think? Which option makes sense to you? According to your best interest. Your best understanding of section fifty C A, that is capital gains and rule eleven U A. And fifty-six to ten. So, here we have three rules in place, now, first of all, you think what you think should be the best answer? Okay, so we got option B, one answer, okay? Now, you have four options, you can choose anything which you like. Okay? So, option C, they have given Mister A will pay capital gain on iron and hundred. That is, uh, in the bracket, they have given hundred minus twenty. That is, uh, sorry, that is a, that is a typo, it should be hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty minus twenty. Okay, sir. So, what do you think, which one should be? In this, just this. Just a second, I have to. In this, three rules will function. And what three rules will function? So, I have given you three rules to check, right? So, it will be three rules that will function in this. Now. You can go in detail and read later, but to give a crux, what should be the answer? So, it would be option C. Now, why it would be option C, which generally does not make sense, common sense wise, option C does not make sense. But the correct answer is option C, why is that? So, first, I understand, A option is technically incorrect, because it cannot happen, because though we know genuinely, we know he actually received hundred rupees. Right? So, common sense is, he got hundred, cost is twenty, make him pay on eighty, that's a common sense. Which the customer in real life will always say, oh, Baba, I only got hundred. It is fifty, give me eighty, it's a common sense customer will argue. But the law says, since eleven U A is made only to determine fair value and the fair value is one twenty. So, deemed concentration will be assumed as one twenty, that's a deemed concentration. And then you go in twenty and pay on hundred. This majority people understand that yes, B should be the right answer, so this is current under section fifty C A. But then, there is a section fifty-six to ten. And what does it says? When you receive, so here the buyer, so generally, so this section is known as a double-edged sword section. Here, both are getting taxed, the seller and the buyer, generally buyer never get taxed. Here, the buyer will pay tax and the why the buyer will pay tax? Because the government and the tax authorities think. The item was of hundred and twenty rupees. You purchase at hundred, so indirectly, how much gain you made indirectly? Now, you understand why he will be paying tax? So, indirectly, he is making a gain of twenty rupees indirectly. So, that's why fifty-six section two-ten has come into place, where anybody buys at lower value needs to get taxed, that's the first part, right? So, this part generally.
Sorry to interrupt. Uh, uh, what was the terminology that you used, double, what is it called? What type of transaction is this?
This is called a double-edged sword, double-edged sword, that both sides get cut. The seller also.
Double-edged sword, okay, okay.
And the buyer also get cut. Normally, uh, so you know, it is, it looks illogical from outside view, illogical they say, it says. So, buyer is saying, what buyer is saying, if you, because we know, we need to listen all the views. If you ask, if you listen a buyer views, what he will say? The government has gone crazy, I made a good deal, if I am able to negotiate something better, will you even tax me for my smartness? Are you getting this, Smriti? The content, the buyer. See, good. So, instead of rewarding me for my smartness, you are penalizing me that pays tax on twenty. That's right, but why did the government did that? Why did the government did that? Any idea why the government did that? So, we understood, we, we heard, we heard one side of the buyer, that buyer will always say, I am doing a. so we understood we we heard we heard one side of the buyer that buyer will always say I am doing a good deal you should you should not penalize me for making a smart deals right but then why government did that otherwise what will happen everyone will start selling at lower value and can I can I not take cash for the remaining item so black money will generate more because of this so to avoid that they say we will put only mandatory this tax on both sides
so this is the real intent behind okay
this is the real intent behind this section that is one part second question is on second question is on on GST now let's say SG India wants to export the product of let's say hundred crore to SG Spain as you mentioned Zara is in Spain so Zara says okay India you produce for me hundred crore rupees and tells sends me to Spain now which of the following you think is correct according to you so generally the generally the GST is twelve percent generally on tabex generally I am talking on a general I'll discuss more on exception part but generally it is twelve percent now which statement out of the four you think makes sense so we got one zero written good okay okay that's good answer anybody else has a different view so I'll take comment take something else just a second I'm trying to show something just a second we got two options just B just that so we got two answers just give it I'm trying to find something and tell you why any other option somebody has option C okay just give a minute I'm just trying to check something and show you just okay okay option C just giving now so first of all since it is I can charge twelve percent on hundred crore I could have charged that but in exports it is considered zero rated product so I could have charged also zero on hundred crore by submitting a bond letter undertaking we call it L U T so any company who is exporting can submit but what if I don't have L U T for some reason or something then can it happen that I charge I G S T now then later claim refunds once they could have been exported or I could have submitted L U T bonds both option is there with me or it is only one option so I have both options with me so we have both options so whenever you are selling you have both options so generally common sense wise everybody will prefer L U T generally but both are available and why both are available okay normally when you show GST do we show GST in P N L generally do we show GST in P N L or just 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 GST generally shown out of P N L generally what do you think when you see the P N L in India is is GST which will levy charge from the customer is it your income or you don't show it in your income or in the P N L you show net so let's say the product is of thousand rupees and I charge twelve percent so it should be my revenue should show eleven hundred twenty or revenue should show only thousand sale without GST right so generally you will always find sale without GST generally okay now you see the Tata balance sheet the trend balance sheet which is what do you think in revenue what do you see in revenue do you see the gross up and then reduce of GST and this is what the first option they have said they have paid the GST and then once it will get then they take a refund but then it becomes a cost to them and that's why they have shown otherwise you will never find GST coming in P N L generally never coming in but that's not your income not your expense it does not come in because it's a statutory duty you take from government and give it to them
yes sir so generally it shouldn't come anywhere in the P N L right it shouldn't get reflected
should not get reflected absolutely now something related to GST just to tell you so as I said GST is twelve percent okay any other GST rate you are aware of GST rate you are aware of in text time if the value is below thousand rupees of apparel then how much it is if the GST value of product apparel is less than thousand rupees then how much is the GST rate any idea then it is five percent then it is five so for a smaller less than thousand they say put five percent okay now see the now understand the innovativeness of innovative business man so normally a salwar suit comes of how much let's say twelve hundred rupees let's say twelve hundred rupees salwar suit or fifteen hundred rupees let's say so then ideally it should be GST of how much GST of how much twelve percent because it is coming fifteen hundred twelve percent now how do you get it into five percent your task is now to get into five percent how will you do that what do you think how do you think the businessman would have done five percent normally uh reducing price will not make me lose money uh I'll explain it later sometime okay so first of all I understand if I reduce the price and and if I am selling online if I am selling online then I can always take in cash right but imagine we are selling online online everything is online you get by G P A P A T M and all now you tell me how do I how do I address this and the entrepreneur was so smart what they did anyone has any clue of what they would do chill me any views on that we have not heard you because we have almost everybody if you like to give your views on that so Mr. Reddy the question is normally on a on a product on a textile apparel GST is twelve percent normally but if your product is less than thousand rupees it is five percent so there is a lady salwar suit of let's say fifteen hundred let's say now how do you think you can reduce it by giving a discount also you lose it so understand what I'm trying to say is what you are saying is offline on shop you can do all this jugglery on shop but when you are selling online if I give a discount I lose money the partner will say yeah you lose money providing discount okay now what did it was they say okay what I will do as a customer as an entrepreneur I will say I am selling chunni of three hundred salwar kameez of four five hundred so he will segregate with three items which pajamas salwar chunni all come together in one pack of fifteen hundred they say now I'll segregate centers now you understand the smartness of the entrepreneur now I will send every item less than thousand rupees every item will have less than five percent my customer is happy I am not make supply they say neither my neither I am breaking the law or is he breaking the law if he segregates the items and say I am selling independently composite same but I am giving different different names I am giving different barcodes I am saying okay chunni yellow five hundred rupees salwar five hundred rupees so this way this is the practice followed in all textile industry to save that that's why if you see you get kids dresses or something where it is more to to avoid GST implication they segregate and they show it is not a bulk sale they say it's a separate sale so there is a difference between tax planning and tax evasion evasion is something which you are actually stealing planning is something you planned that okay I will make my products separate earlier you are all selling common product right early it was all common products in a bundle and that's the way it used to be sold but then you planned so so the intent is always they want to save tax but whether the saving of taxes due to the legitimate means or illegitimate means that's the way we need to look into it similarly in terms of uh in terms of let's say uh in terms of let's say the uh what's the oil Mariel oil which is a very famous very famous parachute oil so parachute oil used to sell themselves as a as that we are eating oil right parachute oil that's a very famous case study they said people use for hair that's their problem we are for cooking because for a cooking oil there is a different rate and for cosmetic and hair oil there was a high rate of uh that time back of that time exercise so they say that if people if I am selling something as a cooking oil because if you see their product they will never use to write hair oil they said it's a cooking oil people are applying on their head that's their choice so is it a tax evasion or it's a tax planning there is a very little difference if the intent should be one should not break the law knowingly one can always devise a scheme which in the four corners of the law and there are many Supreme Court cases where Supreme Court has proven that if somebody has used on the legitimate use of the laws which is you have given a loophole you cannot blame a person that he is he is doing a tax evasion and then and you will understand once you come into practice or once you understand the legislative law at times there are many things which law have left which laws have left and smart people have utilized it to their best intent and a customer is is willing to a customer is allowed to use something which benefits him without breaking the law that's the overall intent now having said that uh in case study anybody had gone to the case study the questions of uh somebody would have gone questions of purchases which was given earlier uh in the street because this case study would have been made to you in case anybody who have gone through and would not have understood any question needs some understanding I'll be happy to address if you have any queries any questions anything on business strategy anything on India sixteen or uh any of them on eleven U evaluations or GST feel free to ask any question though the though the case study would have given detailed answers in that we can easily look into detail answers it is a few
thank you sir for sharing such a valuable insights on approaching I B S case studies with the right mindset and strategic thinking students you may ask if you have any specific query uh there is a one query from a student it is how to solve a case study okay
now one participant also not received case study so where do they get case studies like they got on their email or somewhere
the students can download these case studies from B U S knowledge portal uh there is I B S section uh from there they can easily download sir it is open to everyone sir tackling I uh tackling I B S case studies effectively requires a structured and analytical approach okay first of all start by reading the case thoroughly okay then break down the complex scenario into smaller and manageable parts it is very very important to break down in smaller parts okay then apply concepts and think critically while solving case studies in this exam it is important to apply relevant models tools frameworks standards okay alongside strategy one must also incorporate various frameworks for instance India's one one five may be relevant for reco- revenue recognition okay uh in bundled or long term contracts and A S one one six in lease arrangements or India's one zero three in business combinations sections of companies that savvy L O D R regulations for listed entities Fema provisions for in international operations are relevant now after applying concepts you have to communicate clearly structure your answer logically keep your language professional clear concise justify your analysis and recommendation with appropriate reasoning referring to facts and figures from the case if a question says evaluate then you have to evaluate by giving proper pros cons and then conclusion only after that you will get proper mark okay next point is time management stay aware of time conscience allocate time weight on the marks assigned to each question prioritize higher weighted questions but ensure all questions are attempted within the available standard duration okay now how to use open book format although it is uh although it is a open book exam simply having open book exam or open book modules or resources won't help unless you are ready or familiar with the concepts approach the case with mindset of decision maker not just an answer writer a combination of good presentation time management and analytical thinking will help you handle the case studies confidently
first I will check what is requirement key requirement care suppose question says to analyze Zara to analyze Zara's uh model or framework by using Mechenji seven S Hame Zara co-analyses Karna by using Mechenji seven S okay abhame pata lag gaya ki question ki kya requirement hai ek to hai analysis karna analysis karna kya by using Mechenji seven S jo aapki answer sheet hoti hai usme do page hota hai left right okay ab hum aate left side par okay left side ke page par hum ek sketch draw karna shuru karte hai okay voh kaise hum case study ko read karna shuru karte hai okay ab usse pehle hume yeh padega ki Mechenji seven S ke andar seven points hoti hai okay seven points konsa hoti hai strategy structure system staff skill style or shared value to yeh saath jo points hai aap left side par page par note kar leche hai okay ab aapne yeh seven points jo hai page par note kar liya ab aap apna case study ko read karna shuru kijiye okay ab aapne case study ko read karna shuru kiya jaise case study aapne read karna shuru kiya to jab aapko pata lana shuru ho jayega ki uski strategy kya hai differentiation structure kya hai platter and descent light system kya hai vo konsa system use kar raha hai usme aapne case study me pada hua ki they are using mobile app okay mobile app use kar raha hai aur something three D three D framework waghara use kar raha hai okay issi tarikese staff staff jo hai unka young hai okay ussi tarikese jo style hai style kya hai ki vo yeh maante ki unka jo unka jo customer hai vo C E O hai okay similarly employees okay jo employees hai vo unke brand investor hai okay issi tarikese shared value to yani ki jaise jaise aap case study padoge to vo jo seven points hai vo aapke fill up hone shuru ho jenge yani ki ek raf aapka answer ready ho gaya ab aap final answer jab likhenge to aapke mind me pehle se hi hai ki mujhe yeh yeh points likhne hai lekin ab mere ko likhna kitna hai okay mere ko likhna kitna hai agar yeh twelve marks ka question hai twelve divide by Agar ye twelve marks ka question hai, twelve divided by seven points, then I have to write around one or two points in every point. Thik hai? Mere ko jo har ek, jo mere seven heading hai, uske andar ek ya do, ek ya do point har ek kisi mein likhna hai. Toh isliye, aapko accordingly answer ko plan karana hoga, time management aapko karana hoga proper tarik se. Thik hai? Uske baad, maine aapko bataaya ki, uh, open book, open book ka matlab kya hai? Ki open book ka matlab ye nahi hai ki exam mein gaye aur open book khol ke aur answer dhunne ki koshish kiya aur dhunke likh diya. Aesa nahi hai. Jab tak aapne proper study nahi ki hogi, unless you are already familiar with the concept, you cannot apply any resource in your exam. Aur agar aapne resource ko apply kar bhi liya, toh galat karo ge. Aur tab bhi kar liya, agar sai bhi kar liya, toh itna time aapka consume ho jayega ki aapka doosa question ho gayi. Toh isliye, open book ka matlab ye nahi hota ki answer ko seeda jo resource se likh ke dalna hai. Uska matlab ye hota hai ki jab aapko problem aaye ya concept ko aapko nahi problem ari hai, toh aap usko ek bar refer kar do. Lekin refer aap tavi kar sakte hu, agar aapne pehle se usko concept ko dekha hai, exam mein us page ko aap tavi open kar pao ge, agar aapne pehle se usko kia hai. Thik hai? Then. Jab bhi is paper ko tackle karo, toh socho aap us company ke CEO hai. Aapka jo case study ka answer hai na, woh khud hi draft hone shuru ho jayega, thik hai? Ye matlab, mera idea tha ki case study ko ki kis tarik se jo hai, aapko approach karana hai, thik hai? Now. Students, you may ask if you have any specific query?
So, someone has a question on length of answers, length of.
Hmm. Jaise maine abhi, uh, length of answer ke baarme maine Makinji seven S K through samjhaane ki koshish ki. Normally, main Porter five S K through samjata hu. Jaise suppose, uh, how should we answer the case study question like their pattern and length of answer? Thik hai? Let us, uh, say, question is assess competitive environment, okay? Thik hai? To assess competitive environment, I have to apply Porter's five forces. It means I have to reply in five parts, okay? And question is having worth of twelve marks, thik hai? The best way to handle this is by applying Porter's five forces. But you have to reply in five headings. It is must. Each of the five forces is divided into twelve divided by five equal to two marks. If a question is having worth of twelve marks, thik, okay? Then divide twelve into five parts, it will worth around two point four. Then, it means in every point, you have to write either two or three points, okay? To write a complete and high scoring answer for each force, write two key points. And it is very important to add conclusion also. Agar ek question twelve marks ka hai, toh usko five equal part mein aapko divide karana hoga. Thik hai? Jab usme divide karenge, toh, uh, jo weight is banegi, do ya teen marks ki har ek point ki aayegi. Aur jab woh do ya teen marks ki hogi, toh accordingly, har ek part ke andar aapko do ya teen marks ke equivalent uske andar aapko likhna hoga. Lekin conclude aapko with conclusion karana hai, uske bhi marks hota hai, thik hai? Toh isi tarik se aapka koi bhi question kisi bhi area se aaye, toh aapko dekhna hoga ki aapko kitna likhna hai uske andar. Students, any other queries? Uh, there is query from Prashant Jan. First, we write general points, then case specific points. Prashant, here is no scope of general points, okay? You have to apply concepts only. Yahan pe general points ke koi marks nahi hai. Agar question khatah, if, if a question says, uh, to assess competitive environment and you write only general theory of Porter's five forces, then you will not get any mark. Aapko kuchh nahi milega. But if you apply Porter's five forces on case study, then I am sure you will get full marks. But you have to understand how much you have to write. Okay? Okay.
As, uh, as we draw this insightful session to close, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to our speaker, C A Sumit Dada, sir. For sharing his time, expertise and, uh, his knowledge. Uh, sir, your explanation of the fast fashion business, its rapid supply chain, minimal advertising, strategic store replacement in global cities and customer focused innovation brought the case study. To life, it helped us see how high level business decisions are made when time, cost, regulation and competitive advantage must all be balanced with accuracy. Your insights have beautifully highlighted the core purpose of IBS paper, encouraging us to think like leaders and decision makers, not just students preparing for an exam. To all the students who joined us, thank you for your active participation and thoughtful questions. Your engagement made the session dynamic and enriched the overall learning experience. Let us, uh, let today's session be a reminder, IBS is not just a paper, it is a mindset. Uh, the more you dive into the real world cases, the more confident and capable you become at connecting concepts and making informed decisions. Stay curious, stay committed and continue exploring how business operates in today's fast changing world. Wishing you all the very best and once again, a heartfelt thank you to everyone. Thank you, students. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Thanks. Sumit, sir, for coming up with the session. It has been quite interesting, the facts of the case study and everything has been very valuable, thank you.
Thank you, Sriti, for active participation. It's because of your participation only the session goes long and light. Thank you all. Thank you everyone who responded.
Thank you so much, yes.
Yes.